We will call this meeting to order. This is the Birmingham City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January fifteenth. Counsel, you have before you in front of the minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting, or from the October sixteenth committee of the whole meeting. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll consider a motion to approve those as written.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that, those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the council administrators' report. Ms. Kidd?
Yes, sir. Mr. McDaniel's will give the report.
Counselors, you should have a copy of the report in front of you. But for the sake of the record, I will read the items that are included. With six months of the fiscal year behind us, we have utilized fifty-one percent of our departmental budget, and we're currently receiving feedback from the council's leadership on a small list of potential expenses. You should have a copy of that in front of you, and the fifty-one percent should be reflected on page two in terms of budget utilization. District budgets, each one of you have been provided your respective district budgets, with all of the related transactions that we have to date. Please review it, and if there are any errors or omissions, please feel free to bring it to our attention, and we will make the corrections accordingly. Staff awareness, counselors and select employees have been notified that the 2024 Statement of Economic Interest forms are due honor before April thirtieth, 2025. Just let that go. On February twentieth, the Human Resources Department's milestone award program, two of our own, Isola Hall, ten years of service, and Paulette Sims, forty years of service, will be recognized for their years of service as City of Birmingham employees. So, four, four zero, four, four zero, four zero. Yeah. So, Madam Protem, I think you made a point the other day to say you missed the breakfast last year. You make sure you attend this year. Fraud questionnaires, if you have not returned your fraud questionnaire, excuse me, this is a reminder to do so as soon as possible. We have accounted for eight of nine counselors completing and returning their questionnaires. The fraud. Shepherd Harris. We have yours, counsel. We got you. Eight of nine, only one. Beginning next Tuesday, January twenty-first, we will welcome our second semester cohort of Birmingham Promise students. We're anticipating student interns for districts one, five, six, seven, and nine. Student internship experience ends on April seventeenth, so they'll be with us approximately twelve weeks. There have been a few inquiries with the department related to the FY twenty-five COLA. On January ninth, the Human Resources Department communicated the following updates to all City of Birmingham employees. On the February seventh payroll disbursement, it will reflect the newly out, the new hourly rate, that is inclusive of the three percent increase, and the February twenty-first payroll disbursement will include the retroactive pay, July first through January twenty-fourth. Appreciate that, Chief Mitchell. Last week, our public information team experienced the failure of some equipment that controls a portion of the audio, video, and streaming capabilities in the chamber. Those issues were reported to our IMS team and, and the vendor, Diversified. We are still experiencing some of those difficulties as of this week, and Monday's committee meeting and, and Tuesday's council meeting were impacted by the outage, although with the assistance of our PIO team and IMS, we were still able to stream the meetings and amplify the audio in the chamber and online. Diversified had a technician onsite yesterday, and they were able to reboot the piece of equipment, although they were not certain what caused the outage. They also showed both PIO and IMS representatives the process for rebooting the equipment. The panel is currently back online. As it relates to constituents, complaints or concerns that we are aware of inside of the office, there are none to report at this time. Twenty twenty-five Alabama legislative session, this may have been covered yesterday in the Administration and Governmental Affairs Committee meeting, but there are a hundred and nineteen bills that have been prefiled, and that, that total is growing each day. Apart from the total number of prefiled bills, you'd have a, you should have a copy of some of the additional data points around this upcoming legislative session, sponsors, committees, most viewed bills, et cetera. You should, again, you should have that handout in front of you, and take a glance at it. Interesting points on there. In addition to that, we can provide you that link, so you can track what's happening in the legislative session on your own. This information should be helpful in more than, more than one way, but as you prepare for your interaction with members of the Jefferson County Legislative Delegation. As of this month, some of the council members may have been keenly aware of this, but Alabama Senate District Five, formerly held by Senate Protem Greg Reed, the Jefferson County delegation, is now vacated. Senator Reed is now the senior advisor to workforce transformation, which will be responsible for converting the Department of Labor to the Department of Workforce. And I think several of you on behalf of the council thanked him for his service when you met with him back in December. Travel, events, and invitations, the thirty-ninth MLK Unity Breakfast is scheduled for Monday, January twentieth, at the Sheraton Hotel, beginning at seven-thirty. For the four participating counselors, we have reached out to Mr. Carlton, to advance whatever event package that is forthcoming to you and your neighborhood officers. The Birmingham Business Alliance is hosting its annual chairman's meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-first, at the Fennett, four to six P.M. During this meeting, the BBA will introduce its board of directors, its executive committee, and share information about new data trends in the U.S. economy. The Alabama League of Municipalities Advocacy Day is scheduled for Wednesday, February twelfth, at the Renaissance Hotel in Montgomery, eleven to six-thirty P.M. National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference is March tenth through twelfth in Washington, D.C., at the Washington Marriott Marquis. The early bird registration ends on February nineteenth. I do want to point out, that's just for basic attendees, there's an exception for that time starting sooner for those of you who are members of committees or boards. The Mayor's UNCF Mass Ball is scheduled for Saturday, March eighth, at the Sheraton Hotel. More details are forthcoming from the UNCF. Mr. President, members of the council, that concludes the administrators' report. Are there questions?
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel's. Are there any questions? All right. I don't think there are, so we'll move, keep moving. Next item is update on the City of Birmingham's website from the IMS department.
Glad you could join us.
Glad you could join us.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay? Okay, perfect. Close, okay. My name is Jeremy Kitchens, I work in the IMS department, I'm the project manager on the website, website redesign project. I'm here with Zach and Drew, they're part of the internal web team, as well as some of the leadership from the IMS team. So, the purpose of us being here is to give you an update on the website, I want to give you an idea of the partner we're working with, where we've been, where we are now, and where we're headed. So with that, are any of you familiar with the Webby Award? W-E-B-B-Y, Webby Award. It's the Oscars of the internet. So, it's one of the most prestigious international awards that can be awarded to someone who has great contributions to technology. Harish Rao was a recipient of this award, he's also the CEO of Interpersonal Frequency. That's the vendor we're partnered with on this website. So with that being said, based on his leadership and the purview of his leadership, Interpersonal Frequency is taking a two-pronged approach, a security first, and a citizens-focused approach on website development. From a security perspective, they're using Fulcrum Hosting as the hosting platform, they've never been hacked, they also have continuous, continuous monitoring, they have end-to-end encryption, and they guarantee a ninety-nine point nine percent uptime of our website. From a content management standpoint, they use Drupal. So to give you an idea of other entities that utilize Drupal, the Department of Homeland Security uses Drupal, NASA, as well as Department of Energy. And so right now, today, our intention is to use some of the best practices, as well as the best technologies available for the new website, to ensure the security of the citizens' data, as well as our own integrity of our security. From a citizens-focused perspective, they make decisions based on the data that's qualitative and quantitative. Let's scroll up here. So Voice of Citizen was installed on our current website. It was used to track, monitor, and record the activities of users as they logged into the website. So the webpages they were on, how long they were on those pages, as well as what they were searching for. So that's where this data came from. Not only that, there was a survey, I'm sure you've seen it, where users were able, end-users were able to log into the system, and once they were on our website, they filled out a survey to say the things that they liked and things that they didn't like. So we had qualitative and quantitative data being collected. They took it a step further, this, this was all during the discovery period, there were community listening sessions. So we reached out to the neighborhood associations, we recruited citizens to come in and provide us with information on things that they liked about the website, things that they didn't like, and things that they wished we had. We had multiple sessions with those citizens. Then they took it a step farther. We had in-depth interviews with the Small Business Council. So we received diverse and broad range of feedback, not only from the citizens, but also from the business community. Based on that feedback, there was a report that was generated called the Capstone Project, that happened in June of 2024. So that was the ending of the discovery phase, and then the beginning of the define stage. And so during that defining stage, the success factors were identified, what are the things that will make this website a success? All these things were based on the feedback that we received from the citizens, the internal stakeholders, as well as the businesses. So from that process, we moved into the design, design phase. The design, the mockups were created, I know you have a handout of some of the still shots of the webpage, those designs were developed and created in the functionality based on the data that was gathered from the citizens, internal stakeholders, as well as our leadership team. So from there, the designs were approved, we moved into development, and while their team, the vendor, was developing, they were training us internally how to create content. There were several content coaching sessions, there were several strategy sessions, and they were all around the design of creating content that was curated specifically for their department. That moves us into October, which is when we started to migrate pages from the old site to the new site. There were over five hundred pages migrated from the old site to the new site, and so right now, we're in the process of auditing those pages, making updates, making changes. And so throughout December, our internal stakeholders, our content editors, they were trained on Drupal. How do we use Drupal? How do we update pages? How do we create basic pages, et cetera? And so as we move from define to design to develop, we're now in the launch phase. So we're testing these sites, as you can see, there's actual content on the designs, that's the actual website that, as it is right now. We're still performing the audit, our tentative launch date is the twenty-eighth of January. We've had a lot of engagement from the city. I'm excited about the project, these guys are excited, our leadership is excited, and so hopefully the still shots provide you with some idea as to the successes that we've had in this project. With that, we'll move to questions.
Do we have a copy of what you just showed us that we couldn't read?
Yes, ma'am, I will, I will be able to get you a copy.
Yeah, I mean, if you just email it to us, because those, either my eyes are going, or those TV screens are kind of small, and the print was kind of even smaller. So beyond that, the launch date is the twenty-eighth. Of course, safety is of paramount a point of importance, but public ease of use. When I go to our website, I can't find Jack, and I'm a sitting city council member who's been here since the beginning of the earth, and so it frustrates me that our site is so user-unfriendly, that if you just search for anything, you can't find it. And if you press on buttons, they don't work. So when we get through with this, the public ease of use, like somebody who's never been to a website before can find what they're looking for? Do you promise?
See, do I promise? So what I, what I can say?
Counsel, we would do our best, I think the functionality of it would be extremely better than what we're dealing with right now.
Yeah, it's so frustrating.
So hopefully this provides you with some, like alleviates some of your concerns, so it's a, it's a simple approach, right? There is ease of use on the front end and the back end, and so a lot of the articles and the things that you search for, they were not properly tagged, to, if that makes sense for you. So now there's a taxonomy associated with every article, every article, every department, everything that's uploaded, there is a tag that's associated with a department. So when you go to the search bar, we actually tested this earlier, it shows potential, this is what you're looking for. So in terms of being able to search the website and use the website, that ease of use is one of the reasons why we went with the vendor, and why we like using Drupal as the content management system.
And what is their name?
Interpersonal Frequency.
And Droogle?
Drupal.
Drupal?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Yeah, Mr. President? If I could, for the council, we have not been on the city server as far as our website has been concerned. If there were problems with it, it would have needed to be reported to us, so that we could talk with the vendor, because we are a dot, a dot org at this time, and we just pass through our link from the city's website. So if we are having problems, we would need to talk to our vendor. So ease of use has been probably for some greater than others, but if we don't know what is not working, we can't, we can't get it fixed. We do have somebody in central staff who we believe is going through and checking the links intermittently, but if it's something that we're missing, we would and could have gotten that corrected.
I believe Counselor Abbott is primarily referring to the, the city side.
Yeah, the departmental, when people are looking for departmental information on the website, it's just, you know, when you, when you type in zoning ordinance and you get nothing.
Okay.
You know, that's a bad thing. That's a real bad thing. So it's just, that's just one example of things that people go in and search for, because they want to read it for themselves, in case the council member might have given them some bad information, and they can't find it. So I just want to, you know, be ensured that regular people can go in there and locate information that they need, that city information, that we've got it, they want it.
Right, so and to that point, there is something called evolution and support, that's the last step of this process. We have a hundred hours of evolution and support, and we have a queue of enhancements that myself, Zach, and Drew are already adding to the queue, that they will customize features, create new features, create enhancements. So as we roll out and beyond, we will have the support of Interpersonal Frequency and their staff to ensure that we're able to make those enhancements, customizations, and changes as we see necessary.
Mr. Journey?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rick Journey, I serve as Director of Communications in the Office of Public Information. We've been working very closely with the team on this, and are very excited about it. I do want to touch on one point, that when we began, when the RFP was put out, when we chose Interpersonal Frequency, among the priorities was a searchable, functional, easy-to-use website for residents. The thing that we found in the, in the research with people who were going online and answering the questionnaire, is people over the age of forty-five were the primary people who used it. Most everybody who responded used a mobile device in responding to our thing, but they all complained that they couldn't look at the website very, very well on their mobile device. So one of the other plans with this is Interpersonal Frequency, when this goes on, there will be an app, but this will all be able to, to move as if it was an app on the, on, on mobile devices, because we want to focus on that. We also saw that there was a very small number of businesses that used the website, leading up into this. So one of the focuses that tells us that people don't see it as a functional piece. So that's why all of these things, we want to capture those who don't go to the website, because they become frustrated and they don't accomplish anything. So the whole idea is to make it simple, the searches are easy. One of the things, when you get into the weeds of all of this, and we, as a group, everybody who's been involved, we've gone through hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages that we don't need anymore, because they're all duplicative, or they're all old. And so those are all going away, which makes the search, I agree with you, the only, I'm a pro at finding it, because I've, I know how to manipulate it now, but it, it makes the search awful for somebody who doesn't know what they're, what, doesn't know the site. So all of that should be.
I've got that, who doesn't know what they're doing.
No, not, but, but they don't know how to, you know, you don't know what to do to manipulate it, because it's, it's, it's so much out there. So the whole idea is, is that this, when, when, when it goes up, it's going to be clean and pretty, new car smell, and it'll be much easier to search, and it'll make a lot more sense. Plus, as Jeremy mentioned, with the tag words that are put in there, that also shows an opportunity for us, in which it's a lot smarter with, if one department's putting information on here, and you put a tag word that ties into another department, then it's popping up on both of those locations. And finally, we can put, we can put end dates on material that go up there, that we have all done it at the city, where we put something up, and nobody went back to change it, and it's stuff from literally twenty fifteen that's still there, that pops up in searches. But we can put end dates on it, so that you put it up there, and then when it's finished and it's done, it goes away, without somebody remembering to do it. So, that's all.
That's wonderful.
Did you clarify that, though? Do, I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you mind clarifying that, in the sense of like, is this an internal search on our website, or is this a Google search?
It's internal.
Because one thing that is expressly frustrating is, is when Ms. Abbott cannot find it because of the internal search bar, then I go to Google to try to find it, and I have, and a, and a lot of things come up from this administration, but they're things that are outdated or don't continue. So like, the trash and brush pickup schedule from twenty eighteen might pop up, you know, if I Google it. And so that's the issue, that is one of the main issues, is what is already tagged to Google, and even, even though if we have end on our internal website. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. So being able to add that automatic functionality to automatically retire, it retires that content to a non-searchable state. So it won't, it'll be as if it doesn't exist, once it's retired.
So that's still living out, like the twenty seventeen trash and brush schedule's still living out there?
Well, in about a month, it's going to disappear.
Well, okay, but that's, but that's wise, what I'm, I'm not a tech guy, I'm just, that's, okay, great, because that is a frustration.
We're going to clean that up.
Yeah, that is a frustration.
So I'll sort of pile on here, too. Part of the issue is that when, when somebody, you know, in a department, let's say Public Works, for example, goes in and edits the schedule for garbage collection, they're not renaming the file, you know, that it'll still say September to December twenty twenty-four, but it's the new schedule.
Right, and that's, that's a governance issue, and to help with that, we do have two dedicated resources, a webmaster and a web developer, to audit the site, which is what we haven't had in the past.
Right.
So we have more eyes on what we're doing on the back end, to ensure stuff like that isn't happening.
But I will say, I'm very glad to hear that there's been some, some training of staff on content generation, because, you know, not only is having outdated information on the website problematic, and, and, and multiple iterations of, you know, if you use Google, you might come up with two or three links to the Department of Transportation, and each one brings you in a different spot, you know, so in any case, glad to hear that their staff are being trained on content generation, because that's, that's really important. You know, your, your, any communications outlet is only as good as the content that's on it, right? And, and having, you know, keeping it coming and keeping it fresh is, is really important. So empowering, you know, the people who are actually doing the work to communicate that onto the website is, is kudos, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I had one more question.
Counselor, yes.
Back in the days when I was recognized to speak, that one more question was, each department has a website, I think, at least some of them do. Who is going to be staying on top of the information on those separate sort of little websites? Is that up to the department, to have somebody stay on top of their?
So, for example, community development, how they have Birmingham Land Bank, and et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, and PEP has a website, and it's supposed to be up to date, like, are they going to have to keep it up to date, or is somebody going to be watching them to make sure they don't forget?
So there are liaisons within each department, and there's also a second level of protection called a webmaster and web developer, to ensure there's governance across the way we handle our business on the back end, so we don't get in the same situation that we've been in the past. So yes, we will be watching.
I just want a website the mayor can be proud of.
That he will get it.
And then we'll all tag along.
All right. Counselor Moore, I believe you were next. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it, one, I'm just going to add to that, that, I mean, it's, it's kind of part of that whole retirement of, of, of pages of content as well, that's going to play into it as well, is when it comes to social media, making sure that we're policing all of those pieces. One of the things that they asked us for is that, if we wanted to put the feeds of social media on there, and the, and the advice from Interpersonal Frequency is let that be a standalone piece, so it's not just throwing too much material, and so, so we're not putting data material that may conflict with another. So, so all of those pieces. This boils down to governance, which is going to be a key part of the launch, is with the, with the added staff, with IMS, with, with involvement with, with OPI. We've had good conversations with the city council's communications team as well, all of those folks together, we feel very confident that we'll be able to advance the governments, the governance through technology, to make sure everything's up to date.
One other thing, can you guys please make the website so that every time I go to a new page, I don't get a pop-up asking me to sign up for a newsletter?
We've heard that before.
Counselor Moore?
Oh, so Mr. Journey, he answered my question, I was just going to ask about the usability over the mobile device, because I know there are certain pages that I've gone to where it does not feel, you know, user-friendly, and, and you can't really even read anything, because everything is kind of pushed over to the side or mashed up, so, but you said that it's gonna, it's gonna work on our cell phone, so.
When, when they showed us the designs, and they've done a lot of municipalities, the firm that we've worked with, they've done many municipalities, and when they showed us the design that we were working off of, one of the things we were able to do is then go over and look at it on our mobile device, so that it, it fits it the way it's supposed to, and it's not, sometimes I know that we'll see, if there's multiple pictures, suddenly they'll be stacked instead of side by side, so all of that factors into it.
All right, who's up next? Protem Alexander.
Thank you very much. I do just want to reiterate what has
I do just want to reiterate what has already been said, um, you brought me out of hibernation. I was a document control specialist in the job before I retired. So I do want you all, I think they can really make you all feel comfortable when they're talking about governance, there are certain document control standards that you have to have and that you have to put in place when you retire a document or when you take a document and revise it. So I am happy to hear about your two layers of governance that you put in there with the webmaster and what was the other one, the web?
Web developer.
Web developer. So if it runs right, if it's maintained properly, it should keep some of the problems that we have discussed. I, um, unlike Dr. Quinn though, it is very frustrating when you go to pull up that brand new bulk trash, uh, document and it says twenty nineteen or twenty ten or whatever, that can be very frustrating. So if you're telling me then that you're gonna have an expiration date, then that would be automatic. I think that would be very good. I do just have one thing that I just wanted to bring. If you could just get rid of this black box right here that's over a third of the council's face, that'd be great. I know this is probably just for examples, right? Are you gonna move that thing?
Yes, ma'am, we will do.
Thank you. Just a small thing, thank you.
All right, yes, Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed when you guys highlight, um, Birmingham Fire and Rescue that they have a twenty twenty-three training video. Would that change?
We will work with the department to ensure they have the most accurate, up-to-date information on their sites.
Okay, thank you very kindly.
All right, anybody else? Um, not for you guys, but for us, um, this conversation's really reminded me of this, so, um, I think on the council side, our ability to, um, live stream the council meetings is not functioning correctly, so, um, my wife, uh, likes watching the council meetings, she's one of those few rare people that actually watch them, um, but she told me that when she clicked on the, um, you know, and it's, it's in, it's in here actually, I flipped across it earlier, when she clicked on the link, um, on our page to view the, the website live, to view the meeting live, it goes to, you know, a meeting from twenty twenty-three or something like that, so, um, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, it's, I think we were, we were having some Granicus issues and I think that was something that Jeff's team and IMS was working through with Granicus, because that was the streaming side of, um, yeah, I know we couldn't do it Tuesday, that's why we even put it out and said that we're not streaming, we're only streaming from Facebook because Granicus was down. So I don't know if this is just that instance of something in the past, but we'll look into it.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. One additional thing I'd like to ask about, I'm gonna assume that you guys, um, this was a big focus for you as well, but I think it's really important just to talk about it out loud, is, um, you know, I would hope that we're bringing the, the city into, you know, the twenty-first century with this website and that people who want to do business in the city of Birmingham, um, will be able to conduct a lot of business through the website and, and not actually have to physically come to this building to get a business license or conduct other transactions or look for, you know, various bidding opportunities and things of that nature.
So Counselor, it's, it's kind of one of those things that we're working on internally to let it all kind of combine itself with our new ERP system that we will present to the council next month, but we also are looking at other type of add-on things that would make it more efficient when it comes to the things that you're noting, to make it more ease of use and that, like you said, so they wouldn't really have to come to City Hall so they can just do it, you know, their chair in their house or at, at their headquarters. So, yeah, we hear you, um, we meet internally with a lot of just random vendors that just wanna kind of offer their services as an add-on to what we're trying to do, so we hear you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark.
So as we get into the launch phase, uh, I know we, you know, bid the project and hired the consultant and it sounds like we're having to add some staff to make sure we're implementing, um, on a high level and, and having the right governance. Did we, how many, how many staff, how many positions are being created?
That was two staff people that were added into IMS budget just for the website.
Okay. But no departmental, they, they will use a fraction of a position?
No, as, as it noted, it was that each department had a liaison that would be like their website, webmaster on a lower level and it still would be audited by the internal team that's in IMS that would do the governance sides of what's being posted.
Okay.
So-
And that's, that's augmenting the people we already had, I'm sure we had some people already involved in it.
That's correct, and I'm, I'm sure there's a level of training that they would go through with the news, well, they already have been going through it, so, yeah, it's, we're not doing this in any type of silo.
So do we have a projected go-live date for the new site?
January twenty-eighth.
January twenty-eighth, I missed that, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next up, and this is a topic we love to talk about, paving software update from the Birmingham Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Counsel.
Good afternoon.
My name is Colin Alexander, I serve as program manager for the Birmingham Department of Transportation, and I am project managing the pavement management program that we have started. Um, so I'm gonna give you guys just a quick kind of overview of where we are and then, um, our consultant who is helping us is on staff, or is here today, is gonna go through a PowerPoint to go more in detail with you guys. Um, so as you recall, back in twenty twenty-two, the council appropriated about half a million dollars for a pavement management program. And so, once that was passed, we spent about a year looking at peer cities and models for pavement management, trying to understand what we wanted this to look like for the city of Birmingham, um, going through an RFP process, and we ended up selecting in the summer of twenty twenty-three, um, roadway asset services out of Texas. They've done pavement management inventories in a lot of similar cities, Charlotte, Memphis, Salt Lake City, we felt very comfortable with their product. Um, and so we worked through giving them up-to-date GIS files, making sure that we, they got a full lay of the land, and then they spent the second half of twenty twenty-three and the first part of twenty twenty-four inventorying all of our roads and alleys in the city of Birmingham, giving them detailed scores, um, going through an engineering analysis. They then took that data, we, uh, QC'd that data with them over the summer, um, made some tweaks, and we're now getting into the software side of that, the, the program that's gonna help us make some determinations using this data. So I'll talk about that after RES does their overview, but I wanted RES to come and give you a more in-depth understanding of their process and how we got to where we were, so.
All right, great.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Scott Gordon, I am president of Roadway Asset Services. I'm a professional engineer, I've got over thirty years' experience in pavement design, pavement evaluations, looking at the structure. Uh, we started RES several years ago with a basis of a lot of experienced professionals that do this kind of evaluation. So I kind of wanted to walk you through the process of how we evaluate these pavements. I know it's an exciting, uh, topic to really get into, but I specialized in pavements. I had a great aunt one time said, are you kidding? Is this what you do? And I'm like, yeah, that's, that's what I enjoy doing. So I wanted to walk you through, if you'll start with the next slide, uh, kinda like to start off with the basis, we talk about pavement management, what does that really mean? How do you manage a pavement? Well, it's looking at the maintenance cycle of a, a road structure or pavement structure, if you will. So if you look at the, the black curve there on the left, the one that goes deepest down, typical deterioration life of a pavement's about forty years. Uh, we'll design the structure to withstand the loads, the traffic, but over time, environment wears on it, traffic wears on it, subgrades change, things happen with the environment that causes it to deteriorate. What we're looking at in pavement management is a theory of a lot of frequent maintenance cycles to prolong that service life. So what we're looking at is the most optimistic way to come in and spend the least amount of money to be able to extend the service life. So if you see the little blue lines at the top that kind of bounce around there, those represent various preservation treatments that are done throughout the life of the pavement that are relatively cheap, it's surface seals, crack sealing, maybe putting a new overlay on, simple structural things or even superficial, uh, treatments that will extend that service life out. So the whole goal of a program like this is to understand the condition you're in, when's the optimal time to apply maintenance that can extend the service life at the cheapest amount of money that we can spend for your network. So with that, to be able to make those kind of decisions, we really need to get a baseline of the conditions and know where we are. So that's what this exercise that we led, uh, would. So if we look at the next slide, um, this is the equipment that we use to do this. When I started my career over thirty years ago, I walked the streets and we measured things, and that wasn't very good time spent, if you will. It took a lot of time, a lot of effort, there's a lot of subjectivity between who was doing the survey. So between all of us in the room, we're gonna go out and look at a street very differently and how we measure things and looking at, uh, the actual score of itself. So the idea of a piece of equipment like this is to start using lasers, using technology with GIS. If you look at the back of the van, it's actually a, it's called a laser crack measuring system, LCMS, but it's a device that shoots lasers on the pavement, rebounds back up, we get a texture of the surface that tells us where all the cracking occurs. Once we get that measurements, then we can start determining what the actual distress is telling us in the condition. You see we've got, uh, GPS antennas on top of the van, so every image we take is tagged with the location, so now we can start mapping things, we can start providing maps with all this detailed information we're getting. We also have a camera on top there that takes images as we're driving of all your right-of-way assets. This is all now your property, you've got all this information. Uh, we are doing some curb ramp, uh, valuation inventory as part of this program also, but other cities will look at street signs, they'll look at sidewalks, different things like that, that you're having to manage from an asset standpoint, and this documents the condition of those. Uh, in the front, we've got a profiler that we measure the smoothness of the ride as we drive down the roadway, it's also measuring the rutting in the road, and we do have a chart and some measurements that we took on the ride quality of the road, which factors into the general condition of the pavement. Go ahead on the next slide. So what we do is we take that information and turn it into what we call a pavement condition index, it's a score of zero to a hundred, uh, there's an ASTM procedure that we follow that guides us into how we take these measurements, convert those into scores for each type of distress that we're looking at. I talked a little bit about subjectivity, we built this algorithm called Road Trip, Technical Rating Intelligence Program, all that is, is it's an algorithm that takes these readings, converts them into the measurements of distress type and the severity of that distress, and that's how it's used in the ASTM to rate and get that score. Fairly complicated process, but what this does is automated it to a repeatable process. So there's still some subjectivity because myself and our staff wrote this algorithm, but now it's repeatable, so we can do the same thing every day with every street within your network and not have variability of different times of day and different people out looking at different streets. So everything's now on the same platform as far as the rating and how we've evaluated it. This is just a quick sniff, kind of shows how the color coding of the cracking occurs within the algorithm of the measurements. That easy allows us to go back and do quality control testing on the program. Uh, Colin talked about, we're doing some tweaking, that's kind of what we were doing there, we came and visited back in June, walked some streets with your staff, looked at what they were seeing, what we measured, made sure it matched up with what they were used to seeing from a staff level. Uh, we saw a few things, maybe we need to tweak the sensitivity of how the laser's telling us about a certain crack level, and so we did that to where everybody had a lot more confidence in what the rating system was giving us. So now that we've got the rating system, let's go to the next slide, we can start looking at some of the results. So some of the output of this is now we've created an online map for your staff to be able to reference and use, that color codes the condition of every street segment within your network. So your GIS group has given us your map of your network, each road is segmented block to block, there's an ID number that we track, so we take all of our data and we convert it back into that GIS database file as a pavement layer using those same ID numbers. So now we've got a map that shows each street segment with your GIS color-coded to the condition of that pavement. We can also dive in, they can, interactive maps, they can zoom into each street neighborhoods, look what's going on each block, we even break it down into sample sizes, so they can get a lot more detailed information of what the pavement is actually doing. Uh, so you'll see the scale there on the, the right in the lower corner, green is good, darker the color, red's bad. So you can quickly look at a network like this and see where you maybe have some hotspots and some roads that need some treatment. So this is just some of the tools that this information can give your staff to be able to quickly go in and analyze what's going on within the network. Next slide, please. So breaking out some of the statistics, uh, we create some graphs for your staff and looking at some reports, uh, if you look at the bar graph there, from the right is the very good conditions, onto the left is poor, so you can see the balance of your network is toward the good side. The average PCI was sixty-three in this network, uh, that's, average is usually sixty to seventy-five is what we see in most cities, so we're a little bit at the lower end, but still in pretty good shape. Uh, you see a lot of roads in that fair to poor categories where we probably wanna focus a lot of preservation, a lot of maintenance activity. You see the roads in the red category, that aligns with, there's a term up there at the top right, says backlog twelve percent. That is meaning twelve percent of your network is in that red category, meaning it needs to be rebuilt. These are roads that we just can't do simple maintenance to, we've gotta go back to the structure and rebuild the base and build the pavement back up. We've had enough damage to it that structurally it's not performing adequately enough. So roads that sit in those red categories and backlog aren't gonna get any better, they may not necessarily get any worse, but we've gotta deal with them, we've gotta rebuild them. Uh, that's the most expensive categories obviously to fix, so sometimes cities have to look at special funding, uh, it takes a lot of money to get that backlog down. So the goal now from a pavement management standpoint is not to increase that backlog. We know we've got some bad roads we gotta fix, we don't wanna let other roads start deteriorating into those categories. So we start focusing on the yellows and the greens to do preservation and certain seals and overlays and things like that, to keep those conditions better, to keep those roads preserved and not let them fall into that backlog category, so we can eventually start eating away at those rough, poor roads and rebuild those. So this is where information like this can give us a lot of detail of knowing how to address the problems. Next slide. This is just another breakdown of the statistics in a table, tabular form, we do have information such as the centerline miles of streets that fall into each category, we also look at the width of the street, so therefore I'm getting the surface area. So a large arterial downtown street that's five lanes wide is gonna have a lot more pavements, gonna cost a lot more money than a smaller, narrow residential street. So we track in the area of that also, knowing the cost associated of how we have to address each street. So this just gives us more information to understand how, where the money needs to be spent, how we break it down. There's a lot of numbers here, a lot of data, um, but this gives you a lot more information to start making the decisions on. Next slide, please. Talked about ride quality, this is another component that we factor in, the profiler that was on the front of that van is actually measuring the vertical rise as the vehicle drives down the roadway. It somewhat correlates to distress, sometimes you have cracks that are pretty smooth, you don't notice them when you drive over them, other times, depending on how the street was built, it may ride a little rough, and it's not because of cracking or any distress, it was just built that way. Uh, you have manholes and different things throughout the street that your car might hit and bump, it's gonna cause a rougher ride. Is that something we need to go maintain? Maybe not. So it's not a straight correlation, but it does give us some alignment, you see that's a very familiar-looking, uh, distribution there of how the ride quality lines up with the road condition. But this is just another way of looking that, okay, if a road's in very poor condition but the ride quality's really good, maybe that's not as higher priority to go fix as a road that's got both poor ride quality and poor condition. So it's just another factor to consider in as we're trying to assess how we wanna maintain these streets. So the last slide I got's really getting into the questionings, the next step now is- The next step now is, how do we take this data and how do we start putting together a maintenance plan? That's where Colin and the staff's going to start looking at it. You've purchased some software called Street Logix. They're just now getting into the implementation and training portion of that where that soft, that data that we've collected can now be imported into that software. You can run up some prioritization routines, look at, arterial's probably going to carry more weight than a residential street as far as needing to maintain it sooner. You also look at these categories and you look at the low end of a category, meaning if I defer treatment, don't deal with it in the next year or two, it's going to deteriorate to the lower category and it's going to cost a lot more money. So we want to prioritize those roads that are right on the edge of kind of getting into those areas that are going to start costing us a lot more money and treat them now. So Colin, I don't know if you have anything you want to follow up with that, but that's kind of how we got with the data. Next steps, running through that.
Yeah, just a couple of more points I wanted to add to that before we'll take questions. So the, the software, the goal of the software is basically to say, what are the various treatment processes that we have? What are the average costs of that? What is the budget that we have allocated? And then make recommendations, not necessarily saying these are specifically the streets, but make recommendations as to what are the streets that we should address with the various types of repairs to get the highest PCI score based on the budget that we have every year. And so that, and that program will then predict our PCI score year over year, and then after three years, we'll go out and do another evaluation to make sure that we're keeping honest on the ground, what is, what we think we're doing as we're going along. And then the other point I wanted to make too is that you saw the, the full street network. We also did an evaluation of our alley network as well because we understand that that's something we're going to have to start maintaining and going forward. So that gives us a starting base as well, something to think about, not necessarily saying that's what we're going to invest in, but it gives us the data to at least in the future, start looking at that as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and take questions.
Yeah, glad to hear you mention, you know, that we aspire to be on a every three-year assessment schedule because, you know, this is a snapshot, a point in time, and, you know, prior to now, we were operating off of the assessment that was done in 2015. So, you know, I'm sure our roadway network doesn't look anything like it did in 2015.
That's true. And actually, I'll make one more point too in terms of the, the PCI score that RAS presented. That's from when they were scanning and collecting over twenty-three and early twenty-four, so that does not include all the paving that we did this year. So our PCI score is already slightly higher than it was when RAS did their inventory. So that's just something to think about as we move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, the other good point of that I'll mention, you need to find out the deterioration rate, how quickly these roads deteriorate. And by getting regular data every three years like that, that gives us more data points and we can start looking at deterioration. Because right now, we're just using standard curves nationwide that are pretty good at predicting, but these models that we're going to start running with these, you know, we're looking at five-year budget planning, looking at roads that if they don't get treated, how fast do they deteriorate? Do we need to get to them? So the more data we get, the better we can define those curves and be a little bit more realistic. Questions? Counselor Rabbit.
I'm really happy to see this data because it used to be a guy like you going out and looking and saying, well, it doesn't look so bad to me, you know. So I'm glad to hear that we have professional data. I wanted to ask, I was happy to hear that we looked at the alleys. I wanted to ask, we have a bad habit in Birmingham of filling up our streets up to the top of the curb in places, and therefore we don't have curbs anymore. And we fill up our sewer inlets with asphalt so that the water has three inches to get in instead of the ten it used to have. So did your equipment look at any of that kind of?
No, we didn't focus on any of that. What you're looking at is really the elevation of the pavement surface and how, you know, what the curb relief is. Now, we, we do hold those images. Once again, every image we took with that van, we're taking an image every fifteen feet as we drive down the roadway. Each image overlaps, it's about a twenty-foot length of what we're gathering, so we've got overlapping images. What we can do, if, if the city's interested in looking at that, and we've done this in the past, is look at that curb and gutter condition. Not only can you look at the condition of it, you can also look at that relief and to see if, if yes, if overlays have been placed on the road that's taken up that curb height that should be carrying water. And if we see that, you know, we're not going to get accurate to a quarter of an inch measurement, but we can get within an inch measurement from that top camera and see where that relief is and see if we've got enough, or if it's, it's filled up the curb pan so that your water's not draining correct. So we could do a sideline evaluation that can factor in.
Yeah, I think that that's a really good point, Counselor, and I think the goal of this to start with is that we want to use this as a model for asset management across the board, not just the road condition. We're starting with the road condition and we're starting with ADA curb ramps, but the hope is that we can take this model and expand it to things like that. But at the moment, no, that's not going to be addressed in this program, but that doesn't preclude it from being addressed in future iterations.
Okay, well, Mr. Spark says me taking photographs of all the places that are egregious, so I'm working on it. But I also wanted to ask about the alleys. We also have a habit of not milling down our alleys, and so we have alleys that are twelve inches thick. Well, when people access their property or their home from behind, they fall off the alley into their driveway, which is bad for their cars. So I know you're looking at pavement smoothness and things like that, so are you looking at anything like the thickness of how much we've paved?
No, you're not.
So who's? No, not, not specifically. And I, I think, you know, some of this is, again, learning and evaluating so that we can go back and, and perhaps in partnership with, you know, other departments, looking at our, our standards and seeing where there needs to be adjustments. I don't think we're there yet. This is really the beginning of getting into asset management, but I think your point is well taken, is something that we need to think about and evaluate further along.
Well, yeah, because when you fall off the alley, usually you scrape something underneath your car that's probably valuable and needed for your car to operate correctly. So if we just keep on paving and paving and paving, it causes problems for a lot of people. And, and I hear those complaints, and I don't know that anyone is paying any attention, but it's, it's a serious, I mean, it's a serious issue unless you drive a monster truck and you can just run over anything.
I, that's, I think that's well noted, Counselor.
Thank you. Well, it's still exciting. This is still, it's just exciting to see that we're taking a professional look at this. And, and I assume that you identified places where the sewers are collapsing under the streets and there's a big dip.
Good, it'll be noted. Yeah, whatever you get the rough ride quality, that certainly jumps out. There's, I mean, you're, you're starting to recognize, there's a lot of aspects to this and a lot of assets associated with just a street. One thing we're focused on is just the condition of it, the structure itself. The things you're bringing up, things like the contours, the drainage, you know, the, the relief off the curb, how big of a drop-off do you have in the edge? Those are all details that have to, you get into at some point, especially when you're, you're picking a street to go redo. Those are definitely things that you need to deal with. So you can quickly see, there's a lot of information to keep up with, a lot of details to really chase down, but this is step one to get all this documentation. The great thing about it is if there are ever things that we need to go look at, we do have the photo documentation of every condition back in the spring when we drove it. So you can always go back and reference that.
One thing I'll mention, and this may be overkill, but it's come up in conversation previously, is it would, there, there are some situations where, you know, having ground penetrating radar data would be helpful. We have a plethora, and that's a real word, we have a plethora of utility patches around the city, and, you know, the utilities that perform the work also install the patches most of the time. And our QC on those pack, patches are a dude like you or me going out there and saying, okay, that looks, you know, acceptable, but you can only see the surface. So, you know, again, maybe in three years, we'll have ground penetrating radar data as well.
I don't, I can't speak to the technology, sir, but, and I will just say in terms of the utility parts of, you know, that's brought up that I know is frustrating, that's another component that we're aware of as, as a problem, and we are looking into how our excavation ordinance is written and what needs to be adjusted. So that's something that we're in the process of working on, we're not ready to bring it to council yet, but we are evaluating that, understand that it's a concern, and trying to figure out how we can best from a ordinance and, and legal perspective manage that from City Hall. So that's, that is an ongoing process that's taken seriously. It just takes time.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you. I'm, I'm also very excited about this. I feel like having some objective data, or like you said, it's subjective, but it's subjective across every street segment in the same way, you know? So I think that's huge and just a, a vast improvement over the way we've rated streets in the past. And so I'm really excited about, you know, you all having this data to, to guide you in, in deciding, you know, what to work on, and it's prioritized based on condition and not politics or whatever. But I am curious, like, you know, I, I don't know how many miles of streets we have, but it's obviously a big net.
Thirteen hundred miles.
Thirteen hundred miles of streets.
Thirteen hundred, forty-three, point two eight miles.
Huge, huge, huge network of streets. So will we, every three years, is it our goal to ride everything? Okay.
So, yeah, that, that is our goal. I mean, you know, we have to go through RFP processes every three years to restart this, so, but the goal is that this is not a one-off, that this is the beginning of a program.
Okay.
And I think that's how we, in our department, we want to think about street maintenance in general. It's not just projects, it's not just one-offs, it's a program. And that program has a wide, everything from the, the data collection of this to the implementation of what the various projects are.
Okay. And, and I think of resurfacing as just that, as resurfacing, right? And so you've sort of educated us that some of these streets can't simply be resurfaced, they're too far gone. So for the streets in that category, what do you think are some of the factors that will, I mean, because you can't really look at traffic counts because people may not be using them because they're not passable. So will you be thinking about how they improve general circulation or might relieve a nearby road?
So that's where some of the, there is going to be some subjectivity to that, right? Because we're going to have an idea of the general conditions and the general, and the budget that we have and what we should do. But at the end of the day, we do have to make some professional decisions about, we're going to prioritize this road for those kind of things. And there's a lot of different data points that we will take into consideration for that. I'm not sure that I can go into specifics with that today.
Yeah, because I, I was just wondering how would we evaluate? How to work on, how to tackle those?
Absolutely. I, I think, you know, part of it is understanding, some of it is looking at just the percentage of the budget that we have available. Like, we want the vast majority to be sort of our traditional mill and overlay paving, but that we want a percentage that is preservation, and we maybe want a percentage that is a rebuild, right? That, but that means we've got to be selective on those rebuilt streets, and so we're going to have to come up with data points that are fair, that are accurate, and justify why we're picking those. And so that's part of what this Street Logix program is going to help us with. We're going to have a lot of different scenarios, a lot of different factors, and so we're really kind of working with them and Street Logix and saying, well, can we add this as a factor, add this as a factor, add this as a factor, so that we have a full suite of understanding. So that, that's the goal. And then in terms of addressing some of those others that are further down, understanding where those streets are, what their conditions are, helps us apply for grants, helps us to have, because having that data is easier to justify from the, the agency that's providing that money to say why we need this, so.
How do we inspect the roads that get resurfaced?
So currently, we have inspectors on staff as part of our capital projects department, and so they are a part of that. We are looking into potentially contracting that out in the future just to give us extra capacity, but we do have engineers on staff who inspect our resurfacing.
Yeah, because I'm concerned about the same thing, where they pave from end to end and there's no more gutters. But, but also, I've just noticed that in the last, I guess, there are some concrete roads that have never been resurfaced before and maybe were surfaced for the first time with asphalt. So does, does that work well to cover concrete with asphalt? You don't really know.
I mean, I-
I can tell by the way you're looking. I was just wondering, I was just thinking, these must really be old, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that I could answer that here at the moment, Counselor. I think I'd need to know more specifics about the situation.
But like, when did we do concrete streets? I mean, when were they done? Do you know generally, like, how old they might be? Okay.
It's really hard enough. Scott, can you? I don't know if you can speak to that at all in terms of age.
I see this a lot with various cities, and yes, concrete typically in your region's pretty old. And from an engineering standpoint, concrete's used because it's such a rigid material, the durability is very long. The life of a concrete pavement is much longer than an asphalt pavement. And you can run life cycle cost analysis. It's much more expensive upfront. It's three or four times as expensive to build a concrete than it is an asphalt, but it will last several years longer. The, the secret is in that life cycle over a fifty or sixty-year period, does it weigh out? And just depends on the situation if it does or not. The, the thing with putting an asphalt overlay over concrete, I always tell people, there's a pendulum of where you are with that decision. City of Plano, north of Dallas, has historically all concrete. They have just in the last few years started overlaying their concrete streets. Their residents love it because instead of the thump, thump, thump at every joint, it now rides nice and smooth. They're on this end of the pendulum. You go up to Virginia Beach, Virginia, is a client of mine that has old concrete, they've been overlaying for years, they're at their other end of the pendulum. The joints reflect through the asphalt overlay, the thump comes back, then the asphalt starts deteriorating, and then you've got to maintain that, and you've got to mill it off, redo the overlay. That staff is to a point, they're tired of dealing with the headaches of milling and maintaining the asphalt sitting on the concrete. They would rather go back to dealing with just the concrete. So I say that, it depends on your perspective of whether you like it or not. There's pros and cons to it as anything. But the, the, the one thing I did want to point out in some of this discussion that you guys need to be prepared to discuss with constituents if they start calling and complaining about streets. Colin's right, this is a program. It starts, it's not going to solve everything in the next few years, in the next ten years, but it's getting you on a path as a city to where you can start maintaining it and managing it correctly. There's going to be decisions made sometimes to go treat a road that looks in relatively good condition because it's preservation, it's the smart thing to do. Everybody in a residential standpoint thinks about, let's go fix the bad ones. You've got to fix the bad ones first. Well, that's not the, the most fiscal responsible thing to do. That's the most expensive option to go, is worst first and build it up that way, and you'll never catch up doing that way. You never have enough money to do it. So you've got to start doing some of the preservation on the top end and, and manage it, and it's a good balance between the two. You've got to work on that lower stuff, but they're going to see you out there treating streets that in their opinion aren't that bad, and you're going to get calls about it, I guarantee you. Why are we spending money on this street when this street's falling apart? We'll get to that street. So it's kind of a balance you guys have to understand and explain to them that we're trying to be fiscally responsible in the decisions we're being, that are being made in the maintenance and prioritizing certain streets. And, yeah, there's going to have to be a system set up of what carries higher priority when we go fix. You can't fix it all right now, but which ones do we need to start working on? And you guys can develop a balance to do that, but you got to have a plan, and that's what everybody needs to understand, is we're working the plan, it doesn't solve it all right now.
We may need you to come back to some of our town hall meetings so that-
See, you need somebody from out of town that they can all just beat on, right?
It, it goes against the argument I was making to them. I would say, well, it may not get your street, but it's going to get all the worst street, streets first, and we don't just drive in our own neighborhood- And we don't just drive in our own neighborhood, we drive everywhere. All the worse streets will be fixed, that's what I would say. And so I gotta, I can't use that anymore.
Other questions? Counsel Williams.
Thank you. Um, so is, are we, this is great information. Are we going to get a more detailed, like, of our district?
Yeah, we can absolutely work on that. I mean, we're, we're in the process of, this is internal right now, but we are going to work on a public-facing component of that. And I'm not sure exactly how it's going to look just yet, but we are going to work on that as, as part of this. And we can absolutely break down what we're, there's going to be a dashboard that we will have as well that will break down the city's score as a whole and each district's score as a whole. That was one of the things that was really important to us is that we understand not just the city, but the individual districts. And so we can make those justifications to you guys and the constituents about, you know, hey, this district may have gotten a little more dollar investment, but that's because the overall PCI score is, needs to be pulled up a little higher than the other districts. And so, again, I, we're too early to talk about specifics about each district's score and kind of what that looks like. But that's where we're headed with this program.
Okay, so now that we have this data, when do we start seeing plans from you guys internally? I'm not talking about something that's public-facing, but internally about when it will be used? Like for the budget that we just amended and passed?
So, yeah.
What streets are those?
Yeah, that, that's, so that's, we were a little bit, we got a little bit delayed with some of our, um, process in terms of getting ready to use the software component, um, for this twenty-twenty-five package. But we are using the data in an analog capacity internally. So we've got all this data to help select our twenty-twenty-five streets. We've, we're working on a draft package in the next month or so. You'll be seeing a draft package that was been, we've selected clusters where there was the highest concentration of overall PCI scores that we wanted to improve, you know? And so it's, again, the blend of preservation, some of them are, are lower streets. But, um, we are starting to use that in an analog form already. Um, and we're also using it to identify, um, so for instance, we're applying for a grant from, um, Aldot to repave a part of Lake Shore Parkway, um, that we're submitting in the first of February. We used this data to justify that grant application. Again, it's in an analog capacity now until we get the software that we're being trained on. So the goal is that, we hoped that we were using the software component to really make sure that it was highly efficient here for twenty-five. It's probably going to be twenty-six before we were able to implement it from a software component. But we are using the data now.
Okay, and so, I guess, okay, so that, so, so we'll get in sometime soon, the twenty-twenty-five list, okay? I'm, I'm with you on that. I'm going to make my first budget request from the administration. And that is that we internally, as a council, during our budget hearings, get a, get proposals from BDOT on what, you know, we need to do in terms of, okay, if we spend ten million dollars on resurfacing, one million dollars on preservation and four million dollars on rebuild, it will yield this. If we get, you know, package A, B, C, D, E.
So we can, we can do that with the software. We absolutely can start doing that.
And so that, so that is different from how we have done street resurfacing, budgeting, and sidewalk budgeting in the past because we're, you know, kind of given a number that we can feasibly use. But my budget request is that we actually get options to see what, you know, that input would do in those different areas and what it would yield. And then also my request would be, what out of those four or five options, what is BDOT's recommendation? And we, and it can be for different values of money.
Sure, we, we can absolutely put that together. I'm not, we're still getting, starting on training, so I would just, I'll just be frank. I'm not sure where we will be in terms of this budget cycle to be able to do that. I can set that as a goal and try to be that. But going forward with this software, we can absolutely make that a part of the budget process, um, if leadership is supportive of that.
Uh, well, my, my request is heard by Chaz, by, by his smile on his face.
Your request is noted, um, sir. I think that's the reason why we presented this actual, uh, paving management software to the council when we first initiated, um, in two budget cycles ago. Because we want to become more efficient with, uh, the way we handle paving with the limited funds that we do have. So we won't use politics and use data to drive what we're trying to do when it comes to paving. I did want to note to you, first question that you said to Mr. Alexander about, um, seeing the data and, and making sure that the public has a, you know, public-facing way of looking at it. I just want to be very cautious that we don't want to put too much information out to the public, um, just for reasons.
Let me clarify, because if you misheard, I'd like to see the data before anything is public-facing.
I was speaking more, sir, to the public-facing side of it because we, of course, we want to be transparent about what the rating system does and what the rating system will do. But I just want to be very cautious about what data or what data is going to be out into the public.
I, I, and, and I agree with you. I, I've been brought out to people's neighborhood where they brought me to their cul-de-sac, which seemed to me like a perfectly paved street, and they pointed to some cracks in it. And they demanded that I either get it repaved or won't be voted back in. And I was thinking, all right, buddy, um, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, anyway. I understand your concern.
Another, you know, thing that we have to manage in terms of, you know, the politics of, of street paving is that, um, you know, the most efficient way of doing the paving is, is clustering, you know, so that, because there's a cost of mobilization for the paving contractor. So that's when you, you know, when you look at the current paving list, that's why you'll see, you know, this happened in my district. Um, maybe it was two cycles ago. There was no paving west of I-65, you know, or west of thirty-one, something like that. You know, all of the paving in the entire district was on the eastern end. And, um-
That, that ain't true.
Well, in District Five, so, anyway, um, so, in any case, just, you know, the, the public typically doesn't think of that. And just want to remind folks about it. By the way, when you look in, on this list and you see that bright green, green cluster in the northern part of Fountain Heights, that's due to Aldot.
Yeah, yes, sir.
All right, any more questions?
Thank, thank you all.
All right, so. Looking for my copy of the agenda. All right, so that brings us to old and new business. Is there any old and new business we need to discuss?
I have some new business.
Okay.
It has something to do with BDOT. And it is, you know, a bunch of us went up and saw their, uh, control room where they used to be able to control the traffic signals and now they can't control as many as they used to. Is there a, an overarching or an overall plan in BDOT to do something about streets in general? The, you know, because like you drive down University Boulevard in a car, you're driving the speed limit and you miss every single light because none of the lights are timed. Where you can just drive the speed limit and make it through town, and that's just an example.
Yeah.
Since, so can we hear something in the future, um, about what the plan is? What the, what the mission is? Not right now, I, I see you looking at your watch, but it's something for-
No, I'm getting text messages.
It's, it's something for us, it's something for us to hear about. The councils need to hear about what's being done or what's being planned or what the overarching plan is for streets in general. How are we going to deal with that issue? Paving issues, water in the street issue, you know, just, is there a big plan or are we just going to nibble around the edges of the pie until the crust is gone?
Well, right now, I, and I hate to say that, but you kind of hit it on the head, that we're kind of nibbling at it right now. Um, I feel like you were reading me and Mr. Blevins' emails this morning that we're going after a grant that kind of answers some of those questions that you had, especially with traffic civilization that we're trying to apply for. So that's just one thing that we want to be aggressive about, about going after because that is a very big cost. And we want to make sure that we find things that can supplement any type of costs instead of just asking the council for just cash. We at least try to go after things that will kind of supplement those things that we want to go after.
Well, and as a council member, the thing I want to know is that we're working on the problems. I don't have to have an instant answer. But when people call or me and want to know what I'm doing about it, well, I'm not doing anything about it. It's the mayor's administration that's doing something, but we don't know it. So it's good to know that you're going to go after a grant to try to deal with the mess because think of all the air pollution from people going from stoplight to stoplight to stoplight and they stop at every one of them and then they have to floor it to go to the next one. So we're not doing ourselves any favors by ignoring it, that it's a problem. And I just want to know that there is a-
It's a plan.
A big plan.
Yeah, it's, it's a plan.
The big plan to look at.
We're very aware of it and we just don't want to sit and kick the can down the road like a lot of, you know, past administrations have done. We just kind of want to make sure that we're doing it the right way and make sure that we fund it accordingly, especially if we can lean on some, some DOT grants or just ADM grants that we, that we look after for a lot of the things that you noted, like we, we are aware of, yes.
So we, um, you know, back when we went up to BDOT, we were, it was in the context of the city applying for an Aldot grant to help with reconnecting some of our signals. Is, is, or is that the grant that you're referring to?
Um, I don't know the exact name, but I think it is, um, Aldot. If it's not, it's something, let me see. It's a carbon restraint reduction grant that we're going after that will help with this traffic civilization. So I'm assuming that maybe ADM, but I, I'll find out. I'll, I won't keep this to the council, um, and belabor the point, but I'll definitely let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my new business.
All right, thanks.
Second, third.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.